6:07 PM. We will have City Manager Von Norris do the invocation tonight, and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Guy Hocker.
Good evening. If you could bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, please give us the foresight to have a very productive meeting. Bless us all to manage the city in the correct way. We look for your guidance in moving forward, in the name of the Father. Amen.
Mayor Guy Hocker, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Ready, begin. The pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, and thank you all for being here today. We see a full house here in the audience. We have two council members that are excused. So, Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English. Mayor Protem Manning. Mayor Vargas.
Here. Thank you, ma'am. We have a presentation. Let's see, how many presentations do we have? Oh, today promises to be a short meeting. Combination of things. So let's move on to the Hawthorne Homeless Services Quarterly Program Update by Community Services Manager Kwanabui. Ma'am, are you here? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Kwanabui, manager of Community Services, and it's my pleasure to introduce our newest team member, Dulce Medina. Dulce comes aboard as our dedicated homeless services supervisor, and tonight she will present an overview of her initiatives and achievements during the first quarter of the year.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Vargas, City Council members, everyone. It's always a pleasure to present to all of you. My presentation is going to be quite brief tonight because I have a beautiful video that Eric's team from IT put together, and I think, and I'm hoping, that that video will speak louder than the words that I'll be sharing with you tonight. I will be focusing on the location of our homeless services office, the service hours that we provide. I'm going to be introducing our team and a quick overview of 2023, and I will end with the video. So we are located at the Memorial Park, behind the senior center, off the prairie entrance, towards the back of the parking lot. We are, we provide services Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We welcome everyone to go and visit. Call the 310 area code number 3491663 for information to report any outreach request. We welcome everyone to stop by and visit. Our team members are made up of five staff members. We have two outreach coordinators, Raúl Escamilla and Koji Sakugawa. They are, these positions are funded by the South Bay Cog and subcontracted with LA CADA, which is the Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse. They provide the lead outreach services on a daily basis, Monday through Friday, throughout the city, and provide joint outreach with Caltrans, LASSA, PATH, and other community members. We have a full-time receptionist funded through the South Bay WIP, the TSC program, which is, the oversight is provided by Brenda Williams under Community Programs. We have a full-time case coordinator, which I am anxious for her to start, April 29th, next week already. She will be taking half of my caseload, and I am definitely looking forward to that. And then the supervisor, which is me, oversee the entire program, staff, case management, housing navigation, community engagement, and retain partnerships in the community. So for 2023 was a productive year. I'm quite proud of it. Our caseload within our office was between 140 and 150 unique clients that were experiencing homelessness within the city. For 2023, the street outreach team provided 3,029 encounters, and that includes from delivery of water, toiletries, hygiene kits, snacks, assessments on the spot, transportation to and from various appointments. Our office provided an additional 3,480 encounters, and that includes all the case management, all the housing navigation, our Venice Medical Mobile Clinic providing healthcare services, our counseling provided through the telehealth van, and those encompass the 3,480 encounters. We were quite happy to place 183 individuals in interim housing, which includes shelters, bridge homes, pallets throughout LA County. Out of those, 183, 34 of them were placed in our Beautiful Bridge of Hope Community Housing Palette here in the city. We were able to permanently house 24 individuals in permanent supportive housing or permanent housing through various vouchers from the county. And for 2023, we were able to provide, we had the homeless count for, and the graph below shows all the homeless counts from 2020 to 2023. If you notice, the blue bar, those are LASSA numbers. In 2020, the homeless count was at 205. In 2021, LASSA did not have a homeless count due to the pandemic. In 2022, the numbers were 173, the LASSA reported. In 2023, we still have not received our numbers. We should be getting them before the new fiscal year begins. The yellow bar indicates our data that we record through the office. So in 2020, we had approximately 277. In 2021, it dropped to 239. We noticed a 15 decrease in drop of the unhoused. And in 2022, a little bit dropped again, 2020. And in 2023, we have 152 unique clients that we've identified. And the difference between the LASSA count and our count is that LASSA goes out once a year to provide the homeless count. And you've seen the mayor, the events that we have once a year. And our office is continuously going out on a day-to-day basis and providing joint outreach with our Caltrans and LASSA Street Outreach Team on weekends as well. And I welcome you all to visit the links below so you could see the entire footage of some of our pathway home projects that occurred in 2023 and our recent homeless pathway home that occurred in February of this year. And then the IT department did a wonderful video for capturing all the footage for our homeless services department. So I welcome all of you to visit the link below. And I will go ahead and share the video now. So our pathway home events took place in February and October of 2023. It was a joint collaboration between the County Homeless Initiative, LASSA, PATH, and our Hawthorne Street Outreach Team. We were fortunate and quite thrilled to house 22 individuals during those events, all of them unhoused residents living alongside the freeway underpath throughout the city. The event took place right outside of our office. Clients were provided document readiness assistance. They were provided transportation to and from the hotel. They were allowed to take two to three luggages to the hotel. Upon arrival to the hotel, PATH provided the intake and registration process. And all 22 individuals have been placed in the path to permanent housing. Our Venice Medical Mobile Clinic provides free healthcare services, not just to our unhoused residents, but to our entire community. This event has definitely flourished throughout 2023. We have an array of providers providing services and resources to the community. Our telehealth van partner provides counseling and therapy sessions there Monday through Friday as well. In August of 2022 and January of 2023, we were fortunate to house an additional 12 unhoused residents through the LOCKDA EHV voucher program in a building in the city of LA. Our property owner, Ms. Goodman, is a property owner, property manager, that has been a strong supporter of the unhoused here in the city of Hawthorne. And this particular building was designated just for the unhoused. And the city of Hawthorne occupied 12 out of the 16 units. Bridge of Hope Community Housing Palette, we're proud that we are able to provide 12 residents interim housing in that location. We are looking to celebrate our one-year anniversary coming up, May 15 of this year. May 15 of 2023, we had our opening day. Our LA CADA service provider did the intakes, welcomed them into the pallets. 10 individuals were able to remain housed at the interim pallet shelter here in the city. They receive wraparound services, case management, intense case management, housing navigation, healthcare services, counseling services, and behavioral health, just an array of behavioral health services throughout the county.
How happy are you today?
Oh, so very happy. You're very happy. You're so happy. This happy. Thank you.
This particular gentleman that you saw thanking everyone is one of our veterans that's been experiencing homelessness, experienced homelessness, chronic homelessness for approximately 10 years in the city of Hawthorne. And I am so happy to be part of his journey and assist him in a permanent EHV placement through our Hawthorne Housing Department. So that's the presentation. If you have any questions?
Through the chair. Before I begin to, I have to stand up and give you applause. Because just seeing that video and seeing your presentation, you know, give me goosebumps. And almost my heart started racing, right? Because when I got elected in November 2018, the first thing I did when I took office here, I said, "I want to be on the homeless task force," right? Especially the South Bay Cog. And trying to bring service to Hawthorne. Because, you know, through that magic age, you know, Hawthorne, we sent about $4 million, and they were only giving us pennies, like less than $40,000 a year, back to our community. So that's why I started fighting for more money for our city. And I have to say that I'm so proud because when COVID hit, right? And then we got a new management leadership through Von, and then through the community service, and then, you know, you were just part-time, you know, under some maggot. And then I told Von, "We need to bring Dulce full-time," right? But look what you have accomplished with your team. I can, I have no word to express, you know, the gratitude. And to say thank you because by housing permanent individuals, 24 of them in permanent housing, it's tremendous achievement, right? And then, you know, to see that we have put people place in LA, in our bridge home, and then in LA County. And then, you know, just to give people a sense that to help the unhousing community, it has to be a collaborative effort. And then when you mentioned, you know, telehealth vans that for mental health, the Venice Clinic, you mentioned the South Bay Cog, you know, that provide funding for some of the employees. You mentioned South Bay WIP, the Workforce Investment Board, La Cada, you know, the PAT. So this is what has to happen so we can see results. And your results prove that if we care, if we put money where that what they deserve, we can see results. So I have to tell you and your team and from the Community Service Department, from you, from your team, that you're getting putting together. So now we can say Hawthorne has a homeless program that is delivering outcomes, positive outcome, and changing lives. Seeing the veterans there, you know, give me almost tears in my eyes, right? Because we see homeless people, and that's what people have to understand. Homeless people is not just drug, drug and alcohol abusers. They have mental issues. They have housing issues. They cannot pay the rent. So that is what we need to help them. And to see that, I have to say, you made my day today. So.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And thank you, thank you. Continue to do outstanding job. And like I said, you know, anything I can do, screaming and yelling to bring more dollar, let me know. I'll do that, okay? So thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We all congratulate you. Our council member colleagues who are not here are also joining us and congratulating your efforts. Very effective, and we're doing what we need to do to help those that are less fortunate. Thank you very much. Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Braun Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Arlene Romero? You could be accompanied by the group.
So, good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to share this evening.
Could you, could you?
Sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about Sociedad Jose Martí. My name is Arlene Romero, and I'm currently the president of our Cuban Club Society. With me tonight are several of our committee members. And also with me tonight is my vice president, Gustavo Vatía. I am proud to say that I have been a member of the Sociedad Jose Martí, which is a nonprofit organization since I was five years old. And one of the wonderful memories I have of this amazing club is our Verbenas, which we are trying to bring this year again. We appreciate the contributions that many of you have made throughout the years to make it a success that it has been in the past, and we hope that you can once again support us this coming year so that we can continue to contribute to Hawthorne, the wonderful city of Hawthorne. With that, we have made many contributions as a nonprofit, and we hope to be able, through this Verbenas, to be able to do the fundraising that we do, and this is one of the major events that we have.
Is somebody putting the background music for you on purpose?
Yeah, I think on purpose, right?
Like, I don't know where it's coming from, but the salsa music is.
So I think that many of you have been to our Verbenas, which you can hear the wonderful music that we have at the Verbenas. And that's one of the things that we do at the Verbenas. We have the wonderful music of our heritage. We have wonderful food. And we just celebrate just a wonderful time there. And we just, the music and dancing, and so hopefully we get to celebrate it again. So if you have any questions at this time? Awesome. Thank you so much.
Looking forward to the event.
The dancing. It's going to be September 15th.
Yeah, that's the important part right there.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And make sure we support the Jose Martí Club and their Verbenas. It's going to be a party. It's fun all the time, great food, great company, warm, just a warm reception. Are you going to have the auction thingy that you usually have? They have a really cool auction with a lot of different gifts?
Yes, so, yes, there is an auction. So we do, we do an auction. We have wonderful baskets that are donated, and we do an auction. So there is lots of things to celebrate and have fun, fun time.
And I know Arlene's going to put on a great show. We're alumni from St. Burns.
Yes, hello. My name is Guy Hocker. I've been around town for 50, 60 years. Thank you very much. And this is Hawthorne. This is what we've been doing for the last 50 years around here with your cooperation and the spirit of the honor and privilege that you have to be part of our city government. I'm here to speak against the charter city that came up on last Friday's meeting. And specifically, I was here to see Catarina, who is not here again, to let her know that there is a group of us that don't believe we should change anything that we have working right now that's working terrifically. I'll list the people that are on the previous governments that are against being on the charter city. Myself, Larry Guider, mayor from '91 to '211, Danny Warriors, mayor from '91 to '213, Olivia Valentine, city councilwoman, Mark Schoenfeld, a councilman, and of course, the mayor spoke last Friday. I received a phone call from Arubin Santiago, Santiago, who is president of the North Hawthorne Community Association, and said his entire group is against it. Now that I have that in the record, I'd like to thank, I think our city attorney provided me with something about the city of Carson that I incorrectly said that they were a general law city, and they are not. They are a charter city. So therefore, I looked them up to see what they, when they became a charter city. And they became a charter city in 2018. And within weeks, they changed their salary. This number can't even be real, except that I have the memo and the rules and the bylaws that was passed. It went from $1,733 a month to $77,000 a year. I have the ordinance. I have everything that was done with regards to it. I have reviewed as much as possible with all of these people. There is absolutely nothing that you, you, you can't do now that you will be able to do as a charter city. Nothing. Zero. And everybody has spoken about it. When I read what the message was in the pro, it said, "We can do this, we can do this, we can do this." All of the things that you said you can do right now. Please, when it comes up again, don't put it back on the ballot. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Rob Williams, please.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. I'm Rob Williams. I live on 132nd Street in the Ramona tract. Been a resident of Hawthorne for over 30 years. I come here this evening concerning some of the traffic on 132nd Street between Inglewood Avenue and Ramona Avenue. Despite the two speed bumps on the street, we are finding that cars simply speed up after driving over the, the speed hump. And I've seen cars go as much as 15, 20 miles over the speed limit on the street. And we have a lot of kids. We have a lot of, you know, pets. And it only takes one accident for a regrettable incident to happen like that. And so what we like to, like to see done is maybe add a third speed hump closer towards Inglewood Avenue. Just kind of slow it down a bit as far as the, the cars that go along the street. It's also a, a street that has a, a light to it in Inglewood. So we see a lot of cars that kind of speed up to the light. Because sometimes, some of you know, when you get to that light, it can stay red forever. And, you know, just encourage, maybe some signage to help encourage drivers to slow down on the, on the street. And that's what I have.
Thank you, sir. Sir, could you just, there's a form back there with the Sergeant of Arms? If you could just, oh, awesome. Very well prepared. Thank you. Shanil Singh, speed bumps.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shanil Singh. I'm a 15-year resident of Hawthorne. Currently reside in the area of 119th Street and Wilkie. Our issue is same thing with the other gentleman. We're having issues with vehicles speeding up and down the street. We would like to see if we can get some speed bumps put on. That would definitely help this situation. We have one stop sign on 119th Street and Cashmere, which pretty much doesn't exist to vehicles passing through. There's been multiple times we've stopped at the stop sign and vehicles will go around us. It's very dangerous. We feel unsafe with our kids on the street, on the sidewalk, riding their bicycles. Our pets, same thing. I've had two of my vehicles total on the street. One as recent as two weeks ago. Speeder, same thing, speeding down the street, hit my vehicle and was attempting to take off, but he was too drunk, so he ended up going to jail. Couple of other issues we're having is burnouts on the intersections. Vehicles are constantly coming down on the weekends or at night doing burnouts. We've also been having a lot of homeless or people coming through our neighborhood. Just recently also, the same day my car got hit, lady jumped over my fence, stole my wife's shoes, took off. So we would like to see if we can get some extra patrol in the neighborhood. We feel like our little pocket in that east side is neglected. We're having vehicles park overnight, sleeping, throwing their trash, doing their drugs. Couple of other things, we've been having some vandalisms in the neighborhood. We, we feel like we're just need to go to, if we can get some help in our neighborhood, we'd appreciate it. Our neighbors all here, I'm pretty sure they can all agree that we can use some help with, with the traffic, with, with the speed bumps, with maybe more stop signs and extra patrol. Thank you.
Are you on the east of Prairie?
I'm in the same, same, same street as Ms. Manning, Ms. Katrina Manning on Wilkie and 119th Street, on the east side.
Holly Park.
Yes, yes. So we're, we're borderline to Inglewood.
Alright, okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir, for coming with your family and speaking, taking time out of your day. Ray Holler, Longdale homeowner, from Longdale?
My, my Ray Holler, homeowner in Southwest Longdale and retired aerospace engineer. My family also has a house at Yukon and 118th Street. That's just north of the 105 freeway. And I found the presentation by Dulce about helping homeless people very helpful because people tend to camp on, on, under the freeway at Yukon and then along the Dominguez flood control channel. And that is complex jurisdictionally because you've got Hawthorne on the south, Inglewood on the, on the north. You've got Caltrans along the freeway and you've got the county who manages the flood control. So we, we're very appreciative of everything that Hawthorne does to try to manage that. But the other thing I wanted to talk about is the Sea Line Green Line Light Rail Extension Project. Thanks very much for supporting the Hawthorne Boulevard option, which runs elevated along a commercial corridor in Longdale, Redondo Beach, and Torrance, as opposed to running through a residential neighborhood 200 times a day. The Metro Board of Directors will select what is called the locally preferred alternative. And the Hawthorne Boulevard option is preferred by Hawthorne. Thank you very much. Longdale and Redondo Beach. Only Torrance supports the Hawth, the neighborhood option. The Metro Board of Directors is meeting this Thursday at 10 o'clock. And the elected officials get priority and extra time when, speaking as the, for public comment. While the board will not select the alternative this week, they will most likely next month. And I figure the board members will have made their decision before then. Your continued support is deeply appreciated by your neighbors from Longdale and Redondo. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Sir, did, which, which aerospace company were you at? Were you at Rithian? That's right. So, so you were my boss? No, we were, we were in the same department. It's good to see you. Say hi to everybody for me, please. Yeah, that was a little while ago. James Radek?
James Radek, 3822 West 144th Street in Hawthorne. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
I'm in favor of going to a charter city. Because as you see, in the county section, they were gonna build the apartment building. County had no say-so. The people had no say-so because the, the state has Prop 9 and Prop 10 that they passed. You guys sent your letters against them, but it didn't do no good. They're, fast as they got in there, they probably went into the round file cabinet next to their desk. We need to take control of our cities. And by joining and becoming a charter city, we could join the other cities when they decide that we gotta do something and fight that. Because we're gonna lose our, the R1s because they're, they're already working on that, what they're doing. So we gotta do something. We can't just sit back and say, let somebody else do the fighting for us. We have to fight. It's our city. And we gotta, unless you want to become the city of low-income housing, you don't see Adam Chef's neighborhood. Of course, he doesn't live in the state. He just rents an apartment. They don't get, they don't get any low-income housing. I don't, how many low-income housings does the state make Beverly Hills build? You know, hey, there's Hawthorne, there's Inglewood, there's Longdale. We get it. Because they see, your numbers are low. We gotta fight them. They're just taking over, taking control. And if they take enough control, we won't need a council because the, the Assembly and the Senate will be running our cities. And that's what they're working on. Just look at what's happening. Prop, what was it, Prop 1 just last election for the homeless and all that stuff that... It, it didn't pass until the governor went and got them recounting the disqualified votes and he got enough to pass it. That increased the property tax. As property taxes go up, so does rent. And they don't care. They're not renters. If they are, they're getting paid, they're paying their rent on our taxes. So, you know, we have to get together, join the rest of the other cities. And in unity, there's strength. And we could maybe fight and get some of this stopped. Because I walk around Bajer all the time. I walk in some other areas. And you see the little houses coming up in the backyard. There's a couple of them where they actually have duplexes back there. And it's, maybe the landlord, the guy that owns the property likes it until he gets the property tax bill. But we're stuck with them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Israel Howard, Hawthorne Police Department?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Israel Howard. As a tax-paying, affordable housing landlord and native resident who grew up in the city of Hawthorne and Inglewood, it was disrespectful and shameful how I was treated by the Hawthorne Police Department on April 8th, 2024. What all began as a parking inquiry on 130th Street in Hawthorne, quickly escalated into a series of questionable behavior that I believe this board should be aware of. First off, parking enforcement ceased to have a nepotism relationship with some of the residents on 130th Street where I live. For example, I was once ticketed for parking in the five-minute parking zone and was given a violation for it, even though I was only parked there for less than seven minutes. Nevertheless, I paid the infraction and I never parked there again. However, as the weeks and months passed by, I noticed that there would always be cars in violation and parking enforcement never issued them any citations. As I began to take notice of this, I began paying very close attention and more and more discovered the parking enforcement picking and choosing when to enforce violations. So to prove it, I began to closely watch my ring cameras. Out of frustration, I went to the Hawthorne Police Department to inquire why there seemed to be one set of rules for me but blatant and open exceptions for many others who don't look like me or resemble me on my block. I was delayed, denied, and inconvenienced by the staff at the reception desk and a tyrant sergeant named M. Francis with the enforcement, who was very disrespectful towards me and my fiancee. Instead of Francis apologizing and ensuring moving forward, she makes sure parking would be fairly enforced. She began yelling at me, pointing her finger at me, slamming her papers on the table, putting up her hand in my face and cutting me off. My fiancee began recording her behavior, which I have the full unedited video if anyone wants to see it, and began telling us that we need to leave the department or else. When I had enough of her disrespect, I asked to speak to her supervisor and she told me she doesn't have one. Out of the entire department, she said there was no one that we could speak to. So after disrespecting and insulting my intelligence, I filed a complaint against her. I asked for a copy of the report as proof that it was indeed filed. The receptionist says, they don't give copies. I asked if there was a reference number. She said, they don't give those either. So I took a picture of it and I handed it to her through the window and was ensured that I'd be contacted within 48 to 72 hours. It's April 23rd and I still haven't heard or been contacted by anyone in internal affairs or any higher authority at the Hawthorne Police Department.
Anybody else wishing to speak? If you, if you wanna get a form, sir? Gentleman's walking out, you could get a form and just fill that out and you'll be contacted. Sir?
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you? Good evening, Mayor and Council. Daniel Granados, mayor at Hawthorne Library, part of LA County Library. I just wanted to share a few of our new and upcoming programs. One of our new programs that we recently rolled out is our Connect and Go Hotspot Checkout Program. So folks with a library card can check out for free a hotspot that gives them free internet access for six weeks. So that program started just a few weeks ago. Those are available now. I also wanted to share that for the month of May, in honor of Foster Care Awareness Month, youth who are in foster care can sign up for a library card or update their existing card and receive a free book. The last thing I wanted to share is that this summer, Hawthorne Library will be a summer tutoring site. It'll be the Summer Stars Program. And we will have tutoring, in-person tutoring, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday afternoons. This is by signup and it's an entire session for the summer. And signups will open on May 20th. It's for first grade through sixth grade students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granados. And I went over to the library, it looks beautiful. Nice and warm and inviting and bright. Tables are just the right height. Everything is perfect. Great job.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, we'd love to partner with the homeless services and get your clients' library cards when they do their transition into housing. It would be great, I think. It's supposed to begin around June 19th. We don't have the exact date yet. Still more information coming out. They're finalizing the contracts with the tutoring company.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Anybody else wishing to address the council? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed order. The consent calendar for the manager, please.
City Clerk Consent Calendar. Mr. Mayor, I have items five, I have five items on the consent calendar. There are items two through six for your consideration and approval. Item two, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions under ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item three, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants for April 23rd, 2024. Item four, approval of the City Council minutes for the regular meeting of February 27th, 2024. Item five, Resolution Number 8458. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, ordering the Director of Public Works City Engineer to prepare a report for the Street Lighting Maintenance District of the City of Hawthorne for the fiscal year 2024-2025 as required by the Streets and Highway Code Section 22622. Item six, Resolution Number 8459. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming the week of May 5th, 2024 through May 11th, 2024, as Municipal Clerk's Week for Adoption.
I move. Second. Please vote. Just a moment. Okay, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
The votes are in. The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Thank you, ma'am. So are we on the bids? Is that true?
Item seven, now is the time and place to declare publicly received seal bids for the 120th Street Improvements. Crenshaw Boulevard to Felton Avenue, Phase 2, Project Number 21-03. There were four bids received. All were accompanied by bidder's bond. The prices are as follows. Sequel Contractors Incorporated, $3,195,100. All American Asphalt, $3,942,942. Hardy and Harper Incorporated, $3,465,000. Palp Inc., DBA Excel Paving, $3,418,650.
I make a motion to refer to staff for study?
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Public hearing on the CDBG items of concern. Madam Clerk, can you read it, please?
Item eight, now is the time and place for a public hearing on the draft 2024-2025 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnerships, home programs. Draft substantial amendment to the 2021-2022 Action Plan for the Home Investment Partnerships, American Rescue Plan, Home ARP Program, and draft substantial amendment to the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan. No written communications were received.
So what number was the last one you mentioned? I just wanna make sure. My document might be set different? Alright. Are there any speakers to talk about this before the presentation is made? No, okay. Ms. Mack, the presentation, please.
Good evening. Kimberly Mack, Director of Housing for the City of Hawthorne. I'd like to introduce Mr. David Munoz from LDM and Associates, our consultants who assist us with our CDBG. us with our CDBG and Home program. He will provide a presentation for the twenty-four, twenty-five action plan. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is David Munoz, part of LDM Associates. We assist the city with the administration and implementation of its HUD-funded programs such as CDBG and Home, under the exceptional leadership of Ms. Mack. So appreciate you all taking the time today. As part of today's presentation, there's four main topics of discussion. So the first is a background on the CDBG and Home programs, followed by a discussion of the resources that are anticipated to be available over the next program year or fiscal year. Then we'll dive into the action plan, which is where we kind of outline the proposed activities, accomplishment goals, and funding amounts. And then we'll finish it off with the recommendations or staff recommendations for next steps and the council decision. So to start, a brief background on the CDBG and Home Investment Partnerships Program. Today, we'll provide a very high-level overview and background on the programs, but for any of those that are interested in learning more, staff is always available to provide more information and materials should you be interested in that. So for some brief background, both the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and Home Investment Partnerships, or Home Programs, are administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So these are federally funded programs, which are a result of taxpayer dollars. So this is one neat way that you can actually see some of that money being used for good in your communities and, you know, making a better place for all of the residents. The city is known as an entitlement community, meaning that it automatically receives an annual allocation each year. And you're not having to competitively bid against other communities within the country for, to receive those funds. The city's annual allocation is, however, subject to fluctuate, and that's based on a predetermined formula by HUD, where they take into account a lot of housing, community, and economic development metrics, to then inform what the city will get for this next fiscal year to implement a variety of housing, community, and economic development programs. It should also be noted that the program is primarily directed towards low and moderate income folks, meaning those that fall at or below eighty percent of AMI. And so for round figures, these are slightly off, but a household of one, the maximum that they could earn gross income is about seventy thousand. Household of two, about eighty thousand. Household of three, about ninety thousand, so on and so forth. Now, in order to receive those funds, even though the City of Hawthorne doesn't have to compete for them, you still have to submit an application to HUD, letting them know, yes, we would like to receive these funds. This is kind of our five-year plan and then annual action plan to address the needs that we identified. So on the graphic on the left is a representation of the two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-four consolidated plan, which establishes the five-year goals that the city has. And as part of that, you know, the city undergoes an analysis to determine what the highest priority needs in the community are and what the appropriate strategies to address those needs. As part of that exercise, a total of seven strategies or priority goals were established. So under affordable housing, it's both the preservation of existing housing that's affordable as well as the development of new affordable housing. Then the provision of public services, very similar to the programs that Ms. Dulce presented earlier, public services that can assist homeless folks or, you know, anybody that's at or below eighty percent of AMI. Then that's followed by fair housing services. So it is a requirement by HUD that, you know, landlord tenant counseling as well as fair housing services be provided. The city could either utilize its CDBG funds to pay for it, or it could come out of a general fund. But of course, you know, the city has opted historically to use, utilize these funds to provide those services at no cost to Hawthorne residents. Then we have public facilities and infrastructure improvements, followed by economic development opportunities such as commercial rehabilitation or business assistance programs. And then lastly was the COVID-nineteen response, where we actually, where the city was actually able to utilize some of its CDBG CV funds from the CARES Act to implement programs like the Bridge of Hope community that was built. Now, that is a five-year plan and you set some fairly lofty goals and metrics within each one of those strategies, but you have five individual years to accomplish those lofty goals. This two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-five annual action plan is the fifth and final year of this consolidated planning cycle. And so a lot of the activities that were chosen are so that the city can meet the goals that were established five years ago. As we kind of go into next year, we'll begin that planning process again and start a new five-year cycle. So with that framework in mind, we'll kind of discuss some of the resources that will be available during the next fiscal year. And we've kind of broken out this discussion into two sections. One is going to be about the entitlement resources that are available, which is the annual allocation that the city receives of CDBG and Home, as well as some special one-time allocations, one of which stems from the American Rescue Plan. They utilized Home as a vehicle to kind of disperse those funds. So that's the Home ARP allocation plan and the substantial amendment to it. And then there is the Section one-oh-eight loan. So starting with the entitlement resources, and I do want to caveat this by saying HUD has yet to release the official allocation. So what they have advised for grantees, much like the city, to do is to utilize the current allocations as part of its action plan and then include a methodology for which you would distribute those funds based on if that allocation increases or decreases. Those final allocations are expected to come out within the first half of May, but the city is required to submit the action plan by May fifteenth, and so we just wanted to kind of continue down that planning process the way HUD advised. So for CDBG, annual allocation is one million, two hundred fifteen thousand, twenty-eight dollars. When combined with prior year unprogrammed funds of eight hundred, six thousand, nine hundred ten and thirteen cents, there's a total of two million, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-eight and thirteen cents that will be invested in a variety of projects and activities throughout the program year. Then we have the Home Investment Partnerships Program. The annual allocation is expected to be six hundred thirty-five thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars. And when combined with prior year funds of four million, four hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred fifty-six and twelve cents, results in a total investment in housing projects of five million, one hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine and twelve cents. And so combined, you have, you know, seven million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, seven hundred seven dollars and twenty-five cents being invested back into the community over the next year. Then in terms of special allocation resources, we have the Home ARP Program. The city was awarded two million, one hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars. And part of this is not to indicate that there's been an increase or a decrease, but rather just an adjustment into how those funds are being utilized. And then finally is the Section one-oh-eight loan. It is our understanding that the city is interested in applying for a Section one-oh-eight loan, which enables it to borrow additional funds from HUD upfront and then pay it off as a loan over a twenty-year period. And those two programs combined are an additional seven million, seven point nine million dollars. So then we can discuss the action plans or the proposed uses of the funds with details about the activities and accomplishment metrics for each one of those four sources of funding. And just before we get into the details there, we just wanted to include an outline of the process that the city underwent to inform the activities that were selected. It wasn't that we just really like the nonprofit organizations that we're working with, although we do, but rather we really opened it up to the public to see if there were, was any interest from any other organizations that would want to participate in these programs. So that included written public notice, published in the newspaper, direct emails to thirty-five nonprofit organizations, sixteen of which returned read receipts. We hosted a NOFA workshop at the Community Center and two agencies attended. After all of that effort, the city ended up receiving a total of seven applications, six from service providers, nonprofit organizations, and then one from a fair housing provider, which is mandatory. Then we took all of those applications, the supporting documentation. We reviewed it for eligibility with the program requirements to ensure it's an eligible activity, confirmed whether or not that agency has the capacity to document that it meets a national objective or that it's actually assisting folks that are low and moderate income, as well as whether or not it aligns with one of the consolidated plan goals or strategies to address the highest priority needs. So after that process, we then went to each specific funding source and devised a plan. For CDBG, there are a couple of caps to be mindful of. So there's three major funding categories. The first is administration, which is capped by HUD at twenty percent. The second is public services, which is capped by HUD at fifteen percent. And then the balance of funds can be utilized for capital improvement projects. So if you had a budget of a million dollars, a maximum of two hundred thousand could go towards admin, a maximum of a hundred fifty towards public service, and then the balance towards capital improvements. So based on that, what you see here is the two administration activities, four public service activities, no, five public service activities, pardon, and the four capital improvement projects. Under administration, you have your general program admin for a total of two hundred thirteen thousand and five dollars. For Housing Rights Center, which is a fair housing service provider, thirty thousand dollars to assist two hundred fifty Hawthorne residents. Then under public services, you have South Bay Workforce Investment Board implementing the Teen Center with a total allocation of ninety-six thousand, one hundred fifty to assist ninety youth. Then New Star Family Justice Center to implement their domestic violence program, twenty-two thousand, five hundred for twenty-three people. Family Promise of the South Bay Housing Stabilization Services, twenty thousand to assist twenty-five people. Catholic Charities, Saint Margaret's Emergency Assistance, twenty-two thousand, six hundred four to assist a hundred forty people. And then Richstone Family Center Behavioral Health Services, twenty-one thousand to assist twenty-four people. And then we have four capital projects, which is a previous Section one-oh-eight loan repayment. So this is not including the new loan that the city's applying for. The Housing Rehabilitation Program for owner-occupied housing units at four hundred thirty thousand to rehabilitate ten housing units. Then the Public Housing Modernization Activity or Project at two hundred thousand to modernize and make green some of the city-owned housing facilities, a total of thirty-six housing units. And then there is an additional activity here to acquire, rehabilitate, and resell housing for low and moderate income folks, and this would be coupled with the Home Program. So speaking of Home, very similar to CDBG, slight differences in terms of the eligible activities that, and projects that you can carry out, and the way that the pie split is slightly different. So administration under Home is maximum of ten percent versus twenty percent under CDBG. CHODO, there's actually a minimum of fifteen percent that must be set aside for community housing development organizations, and then the balance would go towards housing. So based on that, there's a total of five activities that were identified. Again, program administration, use the maximum ten percent of sixty-three thousand, five hundred eighty-one, set aside the minimum that's required for the CHODOs. And please note that the figure here is the sum of all of the available CHODO funds since two thousand and twenty. And then to round us off, we have the, the variety of housing projects that are slated for next year, which is the Acquisition Rehab Resale Project. So it would be layering some CDBG as well as Home Funds. And then we have the Home Buyer Assistance Program, so a total of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Accomplishment goal right now is one household, just given the cost of housing and interest rates on loans at the moment. And then finally is the Rental Rehabilitation Project, which is currently underway to rehabilitate the city-owned properties, eighteen of which are occupied by extremely low or low-income individuals.
One question about the, the amount of money that you have there for the CHODO. Does that money have to be spent by twenty-twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, or it can be carried on after the five-year plan?
It can be carried on after the five-year plan.
Because you know how they have some, a time limit on it, right?
Correct. Traditionally, it's an eight years in the past kind of benchmark for Home. For CDBG, it's a little bit different in that the maximum that the city's allowed to have on hand at any one point is one and a half times its grant. So if they receive them, if we received a million dollars, the maximum that you could have in terms of grant funds available is one and a half million. Anytime you're exceeding that, you run into risk of HUD decreasing your allocation because they're like, you're not spending it fast enough.
Thank you.
Then we have the two special allocations, Home ARP. Again, three categories. The only difference is for administration, a maximum of fifteen percent. Nonprofit Assistance, maximum of ten percent, and then the balance goes to Housing Services. The city initially was trying to implement a tenant-based rental assistance program with these funds. The city underwent that NOFA process since December, got some interest in January at the NOFA workshop. It looked like there were some organizations that were going to submit to apply, and then they ended up not applying. And so in the interest of utilizing these funds and having an impact on the community, a substantial amendment to the action plan was proposed to shift the amount of funds that were under tenant-based rental assistance to now fall under supportive services. And so that's why you see an increased amount there in the cancellation of the TBRA activity.
To the chair again. I think you'd also need to explain because the, the TRA, right? The reason that some nonprofits choose not to apply is because the nonprofit has to have the, the money upfront to, to, to give to the tenants and the landlords and then have to be reimbursed by the city because we only got the money on a quarterly basis. So sometimes a nonprofit will not have that money upfront to, to funding the program and then to wait for the reimbursement. That is what a lot of us as a nonprofit choose not to apply for it.
Yes, that's correct. The program does operate on a reimbursement basis as an additional failsafe to ensure that all costs are allowable, allocable, and then HUD doesn't ask for the money back when they find out that it was spent improperly. So it's, it's a checks and balances, but we understand that financial capacity is, is a big obstacle. So then the last special entitlement source of funds is Section one-oh-eight loan guarantee. So as an entitlement community, the city is eligible to apply for a loan from HUD, known as the Section one-oh-eight Loan Guarantee Program. And basically, there's a formula that determines what the city's borrowing capacity is at any given time, which you see on the screen. So it's the annual CDBG allocation multiplied by five. You would subtract any existing loan balance and then that becomes your borrowing authority. So if the city had an annual allocation of a million dollars and still owed a million dollars when it was applying for this, you would have a million times five, so five million minus a million to get you to a borrowing capacity of four million. And then you can utilize those funds for any eligible CDBG activity, and the same requirements would apply. It should be benefiting low and moderate income folks and the same documentation standards must be met. So through this application for the loan from HUD, it enables the city to carry out certain projects and activities that are, you know, slightly larger in scope and require and require more funding than what the city may have available at any given time. So as a result of this, there are four major projects that are slated. So the Senior Center, total investment of three million three hundred thousand. Then the Ramona Park Improvements for seven hundred thousand. Jim Thorpe Baseball Field for five hundred thousand. And Eucalyptus Park for one million two hundred forty thousand one hundred forty. So lastly is the recommendations for next steps. So there's four main recommendations, which are the same ones that are outlined in the staff report. So to conduct a public hearing, permit, you know, that the public has an opportunity to provide comment, adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five Action Plan, substantial amendment to the Home ARP Allocation Plan, and the adjustments to the twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-four Consolidated Plan, authorize the middle by May fifteenth, and then provide or approve the methodology that was included in the action plan to adjust the budgets once the final allocations are announced, and then authorize the appropriation of the new program year or fiscal year funds. And that does it for our presentation. If there's any questions, happy to.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a vote pending? The city clerk? Or do we just, was that it? Oh, yeah, okay, so. So that's, that was item number seven, correct? Okay, so. Okay, the number was a little off. Okay, so I want to make a motion to accept the presentation.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Mr. City Manager? Does item number nine address a specific problem brought up today? Or is it relevant to another area?
No, there's two areas located on this item.
But does that address what those?
Yes, it does. The Holly Park area.
Awesome. All right. We're going to consider items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen separately. So can you read items nine through, I think it's going to probably be fourteen?
Nine through fourteen. Item nine, construction of speed humps on Broadway from Inglewood to Gravellia Avenue, Eucalyptus Avenue from Broadway to El Segundo Boulevard, and one hundred and nineteenth Street from Atkinson Avenue to Venice Avenue. Item ten, receive and file the single audit report for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Item eleven, progress payment number one in the amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars due to Partis Air Incorporated of Los Angeles, California for Hawthorne Memorial Center HVAC System Upgrade, project number two-three dash zero eight. Item twelve, Bridge of Hope Community Housing, V H C H City Guard Professional Services Agreement, First Amendment. Item thirteen, progress payment number four in the amount of six hundred six thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars eighty cents due to Classic Engineering and Construction, Inc. of Orange, California for Hawthorne Housing Rehabilitation of City-Owned Properties, two thousand twenty-three, project number two-three dash zero nine. Item fourteen, Bridge of Hope Community Housing, V H C H Lacata Professional Services Agreement, First Amendment. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items nine through fourteen?
Discussion on item nine. Ma'am, if your husband stepped out, he might have stepped out with his. So this item addresses your concern. So just want to let you know, I know you came up as it was a fresh new idea. Not an idea, but a fresh new. Your neighbors have already contacted us. So we just want to let the committee know that we have traffic engineers and a traffic engineering group that goes out and sees if this is the proper solution for the issue there. So you're not always guaranteed a speed hump because that's not always the proper solution. It could cause more problems. It could cause accidents at times. So there might be other things that might happen. In this case, we did the right traffic studies and it called for what you see here. Okay? I make a motion, item nine through fourteen.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Item number fifteen?
Item fifteen, amendment number three to the agreement number five-seven-nine-three between the City of El Segundo and the City of Hawthorne for supplemental law enforcement jail service.
I made a motion.
Second. Just go ahead and give us a brief one. We're already in favor. Can you just tell us what it?
No, don't go away.
Just tell us what it means and just go ahead.
Sure.
For the benefit of the residents. Because people are coming to us to help them, right?
Good evening. I'm Sergeant Bradley Jackson, currently in charge of our Hawthorne Police Department Jail. Just briefly talk about our partnership with the El Segundo Police Department for jail services. This partnership initially began back in late two thousand nineteen on a part-time basis. This was due to El Segundo facing some manpower and facility issues. The partnership actually worked out so well that they began full-time services with us, which started late two thousand twenty and then went into two thousand twenty-one. Just to give some context on how many people we book at our Hawthorne Police Department Jail, it's approximately three hundred bookings a month, and that includes us, which Hawthorne Police Department books about a hundred and sixty bodies a month. El Segundo currently ranges anywhere from fifty to sixty-five bookings with our department a month. So for last year, two thousand twenty-three, El Segundo booked six hundred and sixteen individuals in our jail, which came out to about an average of fifty-one bookings a month. Currently, they're up to about sixty-five for January, sixty-two for February, and sixty-three for March, which brings us to a total of one ninety currently. So it has us on pace to book about seven hundred and twenty for this year in two thousand twenty. And then lastly, we do charge them a monthly service fee, which is in line with the current L.A. County fee schedule for bookings. And that is it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Item sixteen, please. Can you read that, please?
Item sixteen, approval of agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the City of Gardena for supplemental law enforcement medical director services.
You have presentations here. I make a motion on this one as well.
That good.
Sir.
I do, sir. Mayor, council members, and city manager, thanks for having me here to speak on our program. This is a program that you're familiar with since we brought this to council before. But just for the audience who may not be aware, I would like to speak a little bit on the program that we administer for Gardena. So as you all know, the Hawthorne Police Department has been in the forefront of medical training for law enforcement officers. Traditionally, there's been a separation between police and fire, and firefighters have always been doing the medical stuff and police do the police stuff. But we've noticed that our response times are much, much faster than fire. And we get there within three to five minutes on average in a city, whereas they are averaging about nine to ten minutes. So those few minutes can make a critical difference in whether someone lives or dies. So what we've done is we've trained our police officers to administer medical care in those critical first few minutes to maximize people's chances of recovery or surviving their injuries or whatever it may be. So our program has been an outstanding success. And over the years that we've had this here in our city, we've saved many, many lives. Our officers are all trained in basic tactical casualty care, which includes tourniquets, chest seals, hemostatic agents, airways. So they're very good. In fact, if I got hurt out there, I would rather have one of our guys working on me than the firefighters. And that says something. They're good at what they do, but our guys are really good at trauma. So the other cities have taken notice. And over the years, we've actually had requests from other cities to basically offer our services, their medical oversight and the training to their cities. And we now have five cities who are under our umbrella of medical oversight, of course Hawthorne. But we signed agreements first with the City of Gardena and El Segundo, Inglewood, and just over the last couple of months, Manhattan Beach. So as part of the agreement, the services we offer are training for every single one of their officers in the basic tactical casualty care, which is basically trauma first aid and a couple other advanced skills. Narcan administration, so they're able to treat overdoses with Narcan. Of course CPR, first aid, and AEDs. And we've actually assisted some of the agencies in training their personnel up to be EMTs. And there's some talk of paramedics, but that hasn't happened quite yet, but hopefully in the future. Some of the services we offer are case review and follow-up. Every time there's a medical intervention that they perform, we try to follow up with the local hospital to see if the care was appropriate and what the outcome was, and give them feedback on what they can do better or what they did well on their deployment. We do regular trainings for their officers on whatever topic may come up, whether it be related to an incident that they had or something that is in the news or a new development. A lot of the equipment that we use does require a medical license. So we use my medical license to purchase things like tourniquets, chest seals, AEDs, medications such as naloxone, and other equipment needed to provide these life-saving measures. As part of our agreement, we also provide operational support. So if they ever have an incident, we'll of course respond mutually like we've always done. But also, we actually send some of our medics out to help them on the medical aspect in case anything comes up. That does include me. Oftentimes, I'll be the medical authority, I guess, on scene. So it gives them a much greater scope of practice. And medical consultation on the administrative side. If there's ever any weird cases, medical legal liability, any policy or procedure questions, we give them guidance on what the best practice would be. So this, in a nutshell, is what we offer other cities because it's been a great success for us. And this agreement is basically a one-year extension for the medical services we provided since two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Thank you. Don Higao, thank you very much for that presentation. Because it was funny because I was just remember something that somebody told me Friday, right? When three sixty was developed, some of the resident moved from Manhattan Beach to that three sixty. And the kids were going to school at the Miracosta High School. And the Manhattan Beach parents told their kids, "We don't want you to go play with the kids at the hood in the three sixty," right? So now you showing me that slide, right? That all now all those cities is coming to us. Now who's there for service? See? That is the beautiful of progress and innovation. And that's what I keep, you know, I have gone to Washington, D.C., to Miami, to Reno, everywhere. And I keep talking about you and our Hawthorne Police Department Service because I said we are at the forefront of innovation and technology and also our police office, that we have a medical dock in our mess, that we've been saving lives, we're not taking lives. Okay? So that is where I tell you, I'm so proud of the HPD and especially since you came on board. And, you know, the other department have advanced so much. And then we see other city coming for us for service. So I have to tell you, you know, it's a tremendous honor to have you and our chief and all your colleagues, you know, like the jails of everything, because we're doing something right. And we are saving life every day. Thank you very much.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Awesome. And what's really interesting about what we heard today is that the City of Hawthorne's Police Department and Public Safety Group is a transsetter in multiple ways, guys. I don't know if you guys have noticed this, but today kind of illustrated that. We have other cities that are looking for us. As an example, our police department. We have them using our jail services because we have state-of-the-art and we have the capacity and we know what we're doing. We have the medical emergency services that through the doctor, police officer is managing for us. We have the helicopter services, which they pay us to be able to send people, our helicopter out and eventually our planes that are going to be going out there. Our sports, they model their sports programs after our sports programs. And coffee with the cop, that started here in the City of Hawthorne, that's been exported. So I'd like to give our city and our police department a big round of applause for all this innovation. It's true, right? I mean, I just know, I just, I compiled it. I saw, man, that's a lot of things, man. They're coming to us. It's not like we're going to them. So I hope it doesn't take away too many people from our services. But no. It's a regional effort, and we're well-served if our neighboring cities are also safe, right? So there you go.
And then, Mr. Mayor, we need to include the nine more one system, right? That we have a lot of cities.
Well, it's regional, but we host it, so, yeah. Item seventeen? Madam clerk?
Item seventeen, proposed funding option for capital improvement.
Mr. Mayor, we have a presenter here, but I'd like to talk about the presentation before Mr. Mejia starts. Under the leadership of council, council has given the ability to staff to move forward with a huge capital project. This capital project will include four phases. First phase will be subterranean parking. Second phase will be a new city hall east. Third phase will be remodel this city hall, which we would call City Hall East. And then lastly would be the remodeling of the Bank of America. With that being said, great subway of the police department. I think after this project, other cities will look at us as a flagship on how to capitalize on capital projects. With that being said, staff and myself and Felice, our finance director, were surveying different finance options. This is one of the options. Mr. Mejia is going to talk about proposed funding options for capital projects in the city. So, Mr. Mejia, please proceed.
Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Mike Mejia, and I'm a managing director at Ramirez and Company. Also, I've been banker to the city for, I believe, about the last half-decade. And so I know the city well, I know the council well, and it's an honor and a pleasure to be in front of all of you today. So we have this presentation up here. I hope all of you guys can see it on your screens as well. I apologize, some of the font is a little small, but it's informative, and we'll go through it with broad strokes. Any kind of detail that you guys want, please feel free to stop me at any point. So what we're going to be talking about today, we have the proposed funding options for the significant CIP plan that the city has in place. Really, today, this presentation is going to cover three topics. We have the project overview. We're going to talk a little bit about the team selection, and we're going to talk about some of the benefits, considerations, timelines, et cetera. Regarding the project overview, I'm just going to give some broad strokes right now, and then we're going to get into some detail on the individual slides. But regarding the project overview, as city manager just mentioned, there's a very significant and comprehensive CIP plan. We're going to take a quick snapshot of that. What we did also is that we looked at best practices. And so we did a survey of what other cities around the state have done, what they're doing, to really assess what would be the best approach forward. Regarding the team, as city manager has mentioned, we have broad experience in the city. We're going to talk about that as well. And then finally, we're going to bring in really an assessment of, you know, what the market looks like, what the potential cost could be, and what, again, those timelines to get this project completed would be. So without further ado, here in the first section, we're going to be talking about the project overview. What you see there, I know there's some small fonts in that table, but the reason why there's small fonts is because there is a really robust plan in place. What you see, the version that you have here, you see that ninety-five million dollars in CIP projects is what the city has in place. This is one of the most significant public investments in the infrastructure at the city that the city will be doing. And really, it comes at a really fantastic time in the sense that the city has done, especially with the team that you have in place, has done really significant improvements in the overall financial state of the city with really expanding capital reserves, with a really stable financial footing. Now, as far as this capital improvement plan, really, the city is looking at all the different potential options to finance it. And what I mean by that is that, you know, we're looking at using local return dollars. There's federal, state, county, local grants that are going to be used for a portion of it as well. We still have ARPA funds that are going to be used, and of course, the city's general fund as well. So with all of So with all of that in place, you know, we then looked at, well, what are other cities doing around the state? And the reason why we do that is always really to get an assessment of, you know, what are the best practices? And so again, this by no means, what you see here is a comprehensive list of every single CIP plan and how it's being funded. It's really just a snapshot of some comparables that we thought were significant. And why would they be significant? A lot of these cities are in kind of similar size to the city of Hawthorne, but also in similar geographic areas. We included South San Francisco, just, you know, some, a city up in North California, just to provide a good data point. Now what we show here and what we're seeing is that a lot of cities around the state, just like Hawthorne, are making similar investments in their infrastructure. Now why is that, right? The reason for that is because after the Great Recession in 2008, we had really a dearth of investment in, in cities because general funds were, were constrained. After COVID, we've seen a growth in the economy, we've seen an improvement in, in just really all the general funds around the state. And so because of that, with those federal dollars that were received, a lot of cities are making similar types of investments in the public infrastructure that, that you all are. And so what we see on the table there is that across the state, from Rialto to South San Francisco to the city of Ontario, these types of public investments, for the most part, are being funded with what's called lease revenue bonds. It is by far the most popular option, the most common structure used to finance such capital improvements. And so with that, this is why we explored this option, you know, for, for, for the city's potential CIP plan. So now moving on, why don't I stop there and see if there's any questions on any of these materials? Great. So now kind of the team selection here, really this here, so like I said, our firm is Ramirez and Company, we are a top-rated investment bank. What we have here, I'm just going to go through some of these numbers and explain why we have them. So we have 52. What does that 52 mean? That means that we've been in business for 52 years. We like to say that our firm, our firm is a safe and stable choice over 52 years, we had never had a name change, we never had a federal bailout, and so again, we've really stood the test of time and have been a safe partner for all the cities that we work with and government entities that we work with, not only in California, but across the country. 25%? Well, what does that mean? What that means is that we participate in about a quarter of all the municipal bonds sold in America. So why is that important? Well, the reason why that it's important is because that means that we understand what investors want, what investors need, and we also understand and can, and have worked with a broad range of, of public entities around California and around the country. 5.3 billion, what does that mean? What that means is that we have the financial wherewithal to do a $5.3 billion transaction. So again, the cities that we serve can feel comfort that we have the financial wherewithal to really manage very large transactions. What we have here, we have the team that's going to be working with the city. I myself was the lead banker on the, on the city's 2019 pension obligation bonds. We have a group of local experts that not only understand the local issues, but that also have a national scope and a very, very long history and a track record of success. And so you can be assured that you're going to be working with a very capable team. What we show here is the experience, very recent experience of a lot of cities in California that we worked with. The cities again range from the city of Inglewood, which is just down the street, again, we've worked with the city of Hawthorne, you see that in the bottom right corner, city of Monterey Park, city of Linwood, El Centro, city of Redondo Beach, again, a very broad diverse set of cities that gives us really a diff, the, the experience to be able to give you comfort that we can lead the transaction. And finally here, what we show is a case study of the success that we had on the city's last transaction. Now this is actually a very significant transaction, not only for the city, but I think also for the broader market. Now why is that? When the city issued its pension obligation bonds in 2019, it was one of the first cities to do so. Your timing could not have been better. Why is that? Because when those bonds were issued, CalPERS had subsequent years of very positive strong returns and so you benefited from all that upside. Why, also, why is it significant? Well, when the transaction was done, it was one of the very first that were done in a wave of pension obligation bonds that were issued all around the state. And so because you were the first, we had to really create that market for you and we did it with much success. And so again, you can be, you know, have the comfort that on this next transaction, we will do the same type of work, the same type of effort to, to make sure that we can get you the best possible results. Now going through the final, the final section here, section three, where we talk about the considerations, benefits for the proposed transaction, we started first by looking at interest rates. Now why, why do we do that, right? Because that's, we hear everywhere in the news that interest rates have increased and, and interest rates have certainly increased when we compare them to the all-time lows that we saw back in 2021, when interest rates were effectively zero. Now, what we did here is that we looked at interest rates and what you see here is what we call the 30-year tax-exempt benchmark interest rate. And so we use that as really a bellwether and indicator of what the broader market for municipal securities looks like. So what you see here, we looked at interest rates going back to January of 2000, so that's 24 years. And that blue, that dark blue line, that's where interest rates for that 30-year benchmark have been. The dotted line, the dotted like bright blue line, that's the average interest rate over those, those 24 years. And so that average interest rate over those, you know, 24 years is 3.74%. Interest rates at the moment are at 3.78%. So what does that tell us? Yes, interest rates have increased from those absolute, you know, basically rock-bottom rates that we saw, but when we step back, when we look at it from a macro perspective, we are still near long-term averages. And so really what that does is that it gives us comfort to say that overall, it's a positive time to be in the market. Again, we looked at some, some more information that we have here, we looked at a very standard kind of structure. The most common structure in our market is what's called 30-year level debt service structure, kind of like your 30-year mortgage, if you will, with annual payments that are level. And so really, this is a very plain vanilla structure, it's something that's used really throughout the state in most of those comparables that we looked at in our survey. Now finally here, what we're looking at is really now drilling down to what we're doing with the city and what are the things that we're considering really to assess what potentially could be the interest rate in today's market. Again, the process to issue bonds takes a couple of months and so again, this is just at a moment in time. With that said, some of the preliminary legwork that's being done right now with your staff is like really looking at some of the management policies. So we did a survey and an assessment of the last credit rating that the city had and we identified that there could be specific places where we can make improvements in order to prepare the city so it can be best positioned to enter the market. A lot of the things that we saw were improvement of some, or not improvement, but reinforcement of management policies that are in place and an expansion of some of those based on a survey again that we ran with other comparable cities. So we're in the process of doing that, your staff is going to be bringing some of those in the next couple of weeks if, and if not, if they haven't also, haven't done so already. So again, in the bottom right-hand corner, what you see there is a quick snapshot of where we thought, or where we think interest rates would be based on today's market, based on your credit rating at the moment. We look, we're looking at an all-in interest cost of about 4.25%. What that translates to for a 25-year borrowing over 30 years, I'm sorry, $25 million borrowing over 30 years, we're looking at annual interest payments or annual debt service payments of about $1.4 million. And then finally, we looked at a sample timeline with your approval today. Again, I mentioned that the process takes about three months or so. We would be coming back to council for approval on the documents sometime in mid-August and be entering the market shortly thereafter. So with that, that really ends my presentation. Happy to take any questions that you all might have.
Okay. Please vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I make a motion to accept the report. Please vote. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Very comprehensive.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay. The city attorney's consent calendar, Madam Clerk, can you read that, please?
City Attorney's Consent Calendar, item 18, Claim for Damages from Terrence Lewis McCauley and Jackson J., A minor. Recommended motion, deny the claim of Terrence Lewis McCauley and Jackson J., A minor.
Seconded. Please vote.
The votes are in.
Awesome.
Voting reflects mayor and council voting yes. Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to make a note that I just kind of feel like it's important to say that this new system is awesome. Thank you, city manager and city staff for bringing this to us and to the city clerk as well for coordinating this here on the dais as we, as we move along and your feedback with regards to this. This is really good, it works out pretty comfortable, we got the rhythm, we know what to do. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sir, is everything okay? Mr. Rob, come on, what's going on? We have elected officials' reports and recommendations, my city treasurer.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out, it's good to see everyone again. I attended the art festival on April 11th, I had a great time and enjoyed all the displays at the school, so it was so nice, it was very nice, thank you. I enjoyed the dances as well, that was very well put together. I wanted to say, oh, I went to the Pancake Breakfast at the Hawthorne Historical Society, so I would like to thank them for their hospitality and good food. Earth Day was great, I had a great time, it was a nice day, wonderful turnout, so that was really nice. Again, my sincerest gratitude to the city staff for all that they do to make these events happen. I told Kiwanah I don't want to see her in May. Yeah, but seriously, that stuff couldn't happen without the city staff, so again, really thank you for all that you do to help support the city and these events that are put on, on your weekends. I also wanted to say, I did make the transaction for the $5.5 million, so we invested in a six-month treasury with a 5% rate and so by September, that should yield us a half a million dollars, so that was great. And thank you, everyone, thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Ms. City Clerk?
I would like to thank everyone again for coming out. Wanted to address a few things, wanted to let the public know that you can come into the clerk's office or there's a form online if you have any public records requests, if you're looking for any records. Records that we don't carry here are birth, marriage, and death certificates, we get a lot of calls for those. Those are handled at LA County and the phone number there is 800-201-8999. I would love to hear from residents regarding agendas in Spanish, if they, if, if you all feel that there's a need for agendas in Spanish. Wanted to let everyone know, Mother's Day, because the ladies aren't here to announce it, and I do believe we will have, we won't have a meeting before this, Friday, May 10th, Mother's Day celebration put on by Mayor Pro Tem Katrina Manning and Councilwoman Reyes English. The food drive, get a lot of calls for this as well, is Saturday, May 4th at 9:00 AM. And then May 7th, Coffee with a Clerk, which will be here at City Hall from 9:30 to 11:00 and all are welcome. And you guys will pardon my Spanish for a second. Me gustaría escuchar a los residentes para decidir si es necesario tener agendas en español. Por favor, llamo a la oficina del secretaria, 310-349-2915. Siete de mayo tomaremos café con secretaria en honor a las semanas de secretarios todos. Residents de Hawthorne son bienvenidos. Gracias and thank you all for coming.
Oh, that was perfect. Not like kind of serious. That was really good, that was really good, that was really good, actually. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Councilmember David Patterson?
Can I ask, Mr. Montreal, before me, I'm still kind of putting my thoughts together, that's okay?
I guess. Bye.
Bye.
Thank you. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming over here tonight and also at home. As you see, you know, Hawthorne is doing fantastic things, I'm so proud of all the staff, all the departments, we have a great team under the leadership of our city manager, Juan Norris, our city attorney, Robert Kim, and our chief of police, Ms. Gary Tomatami. So we're doing a fantastic thing in this city and I think we are the shining light of, of the, of the South Bay with all the service that we provide to us, to our residents. So I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to all of you because like I said before, without the staff, you know, our city council members, we just come to these meetings and sometimes participate in some event, so without staff, the city do not move forward. So thank you for all your hard work you're doing, seven days a week sometimes, so thank you very much. Yes, the artwork was fantastic to see all those art, so thank you, the Parks and Recs commissioners, Ms. Paul Bowe, because I know that was one of your pepties for being there, the other commissioners, you know, all happy, all, all the Hawthorne School District participates, some of the Aruda Islamic School participate, the Castle participate, and even I saw some other entities there, so, and it was, these kids have talent, you know, three and four year olds, they already have, you know, fine arts, you know, talents for them, so it's good to see all that, so thank you for putting that together. Pancake Breakfast was pretty good at, at the Hawthorne Historic Society, so it was very good. And also what I wanted to talk about, the same Saturday of that Pancake Breakfast was the, I think it was the first annual basketball tournament? Yes, it was a first annual basketball tournament at the, at the Badlands World Genesium and those kids, because they have like different basketball competitions in a different group of age, oh my God, some of those guys, I, I was going there for five minutes, I ended up staying for the whole thing, right? Because those kids and the parents were so excited about the game and the competition was fierce, it's like, and, and some of those kids also have a lot of talents. I can see, you know, some of them are going to be Kobe Bryant or Shaquille O'Neal, you know, and they were competing, you know, and, 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 believe me, one of the teams just won by one point and some of those kids was broke, you know, their hearts were breaking, you know, they were crying because they lost the game and the parents were going on the bleachers, you know, so it was a phenomenal event that I, I was so proud to see that, again, our community service department, our staff, you know, Jerry and, and some of the coaches, it was, it was phenomenal, it was phenomenal. So I cannot say, you know, next year, just go there, I don't know if they're going to do one this summer, right? So, but please just go there just to see the passion, the environment of all those things, so thank you again, that was a phenomenal thing. And of course, you know, we did have the Earth Day on Saturday and that again, you know, displays, a show of teamwork, all different departments coming together, especially in our community service, the park maintenance, the public, public work department, the pub, you know, the yard, everybody came together and then to see all the other departments there, the housing, the engineering, the public work, you know, giving stuff to kids and the 30 different other providers that came, came out there, the DJ, and I want to thank Ms. Councilwoman English for being my court chair and to bring all those bikes, we gave 25 different bikes away, gift cards, it was a lot of good, it was a good day, so my head goes again to the staff for putting that together. I was supposed to go to the Scotty Memorial Service that was held on, on I was supposed to go to the Scotty Memorial Service that was held on, on April nineteen, but I just came from San Jose. I was late, my flight was late, so I didn't make it to that memorial service. But I heard it was, it was a very movement, you know, passion, the speech that our chief, Tomatani, gave, and some other people came from other cities to, you know, to honor our canine, our dog, you know, Scotty that passed away recently. So, but I told the chief that we're going to do something on May sixteen for the canine dinner, when we do the fundraising for the canine. So I want, I want to show a video of Scotty, all the activity that, that he, that she participated on, on those events. The other one, I want to say thanks to the chief, because at the Jim Thorpe, there was this group called SBCC, it is Family Getting for Safety Communities. So we got a few dozens of community parents that came to talk about what can they do to help the city, to help the police department, to make our community more safety. So it was good that the chief did send three police officers, and they answered questions, you know, it was a period of question and answer. So the three officers did outstanding, especially the bilingual Spanish lady, I forgot her name, but she was pretty good translating all the, all the answers and questions in Spanish. So thank you for that. That was great. Again, I have to say, you know, I'm so proud of our community service department, especially the homeless program, and Vaughn, and Kiwanah, and Brenda, I have to say, and Dulce, you guys have outstanding show how the city of Hawthorne do care about the unhousing, and we want to give them all the support that we can. So thank you for that. That was a tremendous show of leadership and outcomes and compassion. So thank you very much for that. Just FY, Vaughn, if you can take a note, you know, for the Jose, Sociedad Jose Martin, for the festival, I want to donate five hundred dollars out of my stipend for them. And I have to say, you know, like I said, again, our police department is doing outstanding jobs, so we can give them matter of value every single day, because it is fantastic. FY, May sixteen again is the canine dinner, that we're going to raise money for the, our Hawthorne PD canine unit. So dinner have gone up one dollar, so it's going to be seven dollar for the adult for the spaghetti, no more six dollars, seven dollars, and then three fifty for the children. So bring your wallet, okay? And I have to say, Vaughn, thank you for the idea of the bond, because back in, again, when I started in twenty nineteen, I brought Mister Mahia over here to, you know, give us that bond that eliminate all the liabilities of the purse and stir. So, so I think the, we're in good hands with them for this project. So thank you for bringing him back to help us out with our capital improvement project. So thank you for that. Again, you know, the housing, the Hawthorne Fair Housing Workshop is going to be on Wednesday, May first, from two to four, at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. So this is, you know, put in by the, our housing department and the Fair Housing Foundation. So you should go there and, because a lot of people was asking me questions, so at the, at the park. So it's a lot of workshop that talks about tenant landlords and managed property, attorney, real estate, and managed company that's going to be talking different subjects. So again, May first, from two to four, okay? And the Hawthorne Singer Center is going to have a boss trip to LA County Fair, Friday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-fourth. So contact the Singer Center, so if you want to buy ticket and be on the bus, okay? And again, our Bridge Hope Community Housing is going to celebrate one year, so Wednesday, May fifteenth, nine a.m. So we're going to have some coffee and pizza. And, and Mister Mayor, I think that's it. Oh, and be aware that the county of Los Angeles is putting this alert on the mosquitoes, you know, the, the, the Nile, the mosquito West Nile virus. So make sure that you don't, you know, keep your, a lot of waters there in your porch and stuff, because those can create mosquito nets, so you don't want that to happen. So because that is a, an alert about the mosquito and the West Nile virus. And Mister Mayor, thank you. This was a great meeting, great meeting, great programs, great future for Hawthorne. So God bless you all, and a good night.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember David Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a number of things in my mind, try to get to everything. Of course, first one, thank the community for coming out and participating in the process and making voices heard. I want to let you guys know that, you know, I definitely take to heart everything I've said and all the requests that are made from the community. I had a great time at the Hawthorne Art Show, it was a great event. Art was beautiful, loved it. Earth Day was a well-put-on event, definitely appreciated that, and it was beautiful, it was well put together, and it was, had a great attendance, and I got to participate in assisting the chairs and giving away some bikes, it was really cool. Want to also, you know, encourage anybody that has any questions about any of my positions or anything I say, to feel free to reach out to me, help me to understand your, your positions. Love to have one-to-one conversations with people. I do want to address some of the things I've talked about, about a potential charter. I find it interesting that anybody can be against something that doesn't really exist. You know, a charter, you know, we had two presentations about becoming a charter city, and there, the things that were presented by these attorneys vary, a flying direct conflict to some of the things that have been said at the last couple of meetings. They, somehow, people have been misinformed, and definitely apologize if I've helped to misinform them. But, you know, a charter would be whatever the council decides to put into that document. And so it doesn't mean anything in particular, but it does give us the ability not to follow certain general law requirements, gives us a little bit more flexibility in that respect if we put it as part of that charter document. So a charter does automatically mean any changes to any compensation unless it's part of the charter document. Actually, a charter restricts the power of the council, which is one of the things our city, things our city attorney has brought up multiple times. And that's why you hear about when a city wants to make some kind of major changes, a lot of times we have to put an amendment on the ballot for the community to, to vote on, because it does restrict the hands of the, of the council. And that may not be a good thing, and there might be some things that, that community doesn't want. They might want to, you know, keep, you know, keep us nimble and have a little bit greater power to kind of do things as we choose, as opposed to having to go to the people for approval for too many things. But it, there, there is a difference between charter cities and non-charter cities, that, that being one, and there are some things that we could add to a charter that the people can vote on that can allow the city to do, things like not having to pay for fairly wages, you'd be able to use economic, or use eminent domain for economic development purposes, we can create our own, like, improvement districts. There, you know, there's a lot of different things, you know, that is possible. And we can also change how we handle elections, so we can change how things are organized inside, on the council. So definitely appreciate if there are people in the community that don't, that aren't interested in those changes, but I always take offense to the dissemination of false information. And, and, you know, let's be for getting something based upon the facts, not based upon anything else. I do want to commend Mister Montero, Councilmember Montero, I always say Mister Montero, but it's Councilmember Montero, and for his efforts for addressing a homeless situation in the city of Hawthorne, you know, it's not an area of my expertise at all, don't pretend to, to know much about how to fix that problem. My interest is usually around finances and, and economic development, but Mister Montero, our, our city manager and his staff, Dulce Medina, they, they've done a great job in moving the city forward in that respect. Everybody has brought up having issues or concerns about our homeless issues in the city of Hawthorne, and we had to step up and figure out how we're going to address it. And if you want to commend, you know, everybody involved for addressing that. I do want to address, but there's one gentleman talked about about his experience with the city of Hawthorne's police department. Obviously, I wasn't there, obviously, we just heard one side, but I definitely, I've had some great conversations with, with our police department, with individuals in our police department, our police chief, and I think we have the best police department in the, around. I am very, very proud of our police department, even helped do a little video to help them recruit. Our police department is so much better today than it was when I was a teenager and used to get harassed by the Hawthorne Police Department. But I hope that our, our, our staff is taking his concerns very seriously, because I, I hope that wasn't his experience, and I hope nobody in our, in our community is treated that way by our police department. It really, really bothers me. All right, because things like that do happen, and, you know, not everybody's perfect. And, you know, again, I just want to make sure our staff's taking that concern very, 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 very seriously. And I do like talking about our CDBG and Home Fund plans. I want to say good work for that, that plan and putting that stuff together. I, I think there's a lot of things in there I liked, right, about home buyer assistance, helping people to, you know, fix up their, their property, renovating property, all that stuff. You know, I think that's going to really help our city move forward. I do have some issues, though, with some things I've said at the last couple of meetings, so I put my thoughts on paper. You know, I try to be professional in how I conduct myself and not get into a lot of back and forth, but some things I've said that really, really bothers me, so, you know, I had to put some things on paper. I want to take a moment to express my disgust and condemnation of the unprofessional actions and comments made by our mayor over the past few meetings. Is this precise behavior that sends businesses running away from our city? He has repeatedly lied and attempted to gaslight the people of Hawthorne in order to push his own anti-charter agenda, because he's afraid that a charter would strip some powers away from him. His constant attacks on myself and my employment are uncalled for, and his name-calling and threats of hanging are covertly racist and despicable. There have been multiple complaints filed against his mayor for his behavior and his language, which are unprofessional, and consistently violate Hawthorne's code of conduct. It is time that the city does something about it. I want to follow up on my directive to bring back an ordinance to have consequences of violating city policies of code of conduct. I refuse to continue to sit by quietly as he makes up lies about me, attacks me, and lies to people of Hawthorne, as if this behavior is normal. It is not normal, and it's not okay. His behavior is, is despicable. This is why I ask for our seats to be changed on dais, and no longer to sit near this man. And as my own form of protest, I will not remain for the rest of this meeting, and choose not to sit through another round of his lies and attacks.
And I just want to know, I do have comments that I need to enter the record. By him walking out, that will not allow me to say my comments, because he doesn't, he doesn't want me to address what he says. If you would like to stay, you're going to silence me? He's still in the building, so I want to start. There was a special meeting on Friday at ten, three-thirty p.m., set at an inconvenient time to prevent the residents from being present and voicing their opposition. Okay? You see the move? When somebody leaves the council dais, they, they say that, that I can't say anything. So he has the last word, that doesn't work, he's still in the building. Okay? He's in the building. This city charter, I oppose it, and I join the Hawthorne residents in opposing it. It was defeated sixty-one percent to thirty-nine percent eighteen months ago. It is about salaries. There's no other way of increasing salaries unless you're a charter city. One of our councilmember colleagues mentioned this at the last meeting, saying that within three months, they would place, allow it for it to be placed on the ballot for you guys to decide.
That's a lie, Mister, Mister Mayor.
That's what you said.
And then I'm leaving too, because...
The charter city does not protect us from state mandates. It takes away your rights to do certain things. It allows for the city of Hawthorne's councilmembers not to go through a bidding process, not to go through a bidding process, and to just bring somebody's friends over here and be able to apply for contracts with the city. That's awful. I want to remind you guys that the city of Bell is a charter city. We know what happened over there, the city of Vernon and the city of Compton. Immediately after going charter, the city of San Bernardino, Stockton, and Vallejo went bankrupt, okay? One of my council colleagues that just said a couple of things that he was so upset, he's brought up the issue of, of charter cities at least eleven, twelve, thirteen times. There's an obsession with going charter, because they know that the only way to get a salary increase is be, if, if you go and become a charter. So I'm going to stand with the residents in opposing this. There's no way this is going to defend us against the state, okay? And obviously, something hit a nerve, because they're upset, they walked out, they want to not allow for me to say, and I'm going to say it, and I'm going to finish this meeting by saying everything I have to say. This is simply an attempt to feather their nest. You guys have heard that, that idiom, right? Feather your nest, at the sake of the Hawthorne residents, money that belongs in other things like solving the homelessness problem and the affordable housing program and the, and keeping our city safe. So we need to focus on those things and not just, and not have them bamboozle you, okay? Bamboozle you in thinking that, hey, we need the charter one. We don't, we're a successful city, we've been successful. Our economic rise over these last ten years has been spectacular. Or is that a verdict on the success or performance of my fellow councilmembers that they're admitting to? No, we've all been successful, including with their help. But now, by having a special meeting on Friday to be able to push this issue even further at three-thirty p.m. at a time where it's inconvenient for people to come and voice their opinion, you tell me, there's something nefarious about that and something improper. Okay, so I stand with the residents of Hawthorne, it's going to fail miserably at three-thirty, oh, it's, at three-thirty p.m. this meeting was held, I'm sorry, I'm going back to that. But I'm going to stand with you guys, it's going to fail miserably this time, and I'm going to be, make sure that you guys know exactly who on this council voted to support it and push it along. What you just heard, if you don't like somebody, if you don't agree with somebody on this council, they throw the racism card at you somehow. They're able to throw, well, if all else fails, throw the racism card in there, and that's shameful that they would do that. When they don't like something, claim harassment. I'm speaking to you guys, and I always have, and I will expose anybody on here, up here who's up to no good. Okay? So note to the charter, and make sure you guys let people know. I didn't even get a chance to close the meeting out in memory of Art Osborne, who passed away, who's the husband of Fay Osborne. So let's have a moment of silence in Mister Art Osborne's memory. Okay, may he rest in peace, and everybody have a good night.